I'll be in here.
Hey, good evening, folks. Are you okay if we stay here or you want us to come up there?
That's fine. I think you're fine.
Good evening. My name is Owen Navard. I'm with Trane here in Tennessee. Jeremy Cotton is with me. Jeremy and I and Randy Malden. Randy couldn't be here tonight. He had another engagement he had to go to. And so Jeremy decided that the eighteen would show up. As you all know, over the course of the last year or so, we've been doing an investment-grade audit throughout Stewart County schools, looking for opportunities to do energy savings-type things and make improvements in the schools that would pay for themselves, okay? And during that process, we were asked to do a deep dive on North Stewart Elementary School based on, you know, complaints and suspected so on and so forth. We did some CO2 sampling to evaluate ventilation rates. We did a deep dive on the engineering, how the school was built, how the school was operating today, and then came up with a phased approach on what we suggest you all do to restore adequate ventilation to the school. I believe you all have probably seen the proposals and the executive summary. And so essentially, in short, the school needs outdoor ventilation air brought in. And I don't want to get off on a tangent, but I thought it might be a good idea to give you guys like a basic education of how primary air ventilation works in a commercial building, okay? Anybody here gone camping in a tent? You ever go camping in a tent in the rain? So when you're in that tent in the rain, it's not a fun place to be and you know not to touch the walls because the walls will be wet and there will be moisture and stuff like that, right? Okay. So, primary air ventilation systems in a commercial building have two main purposes. The first purpose is to exhaust CO2-laden air out. The CO2 is a byproduct of us humans. And to replace that CO2-laden air with oxygen-rich, fresh air, outside air, okay? The trick is, is the second piece of that is, the end result is, we want to do that to where the building pressurizes. We keep that building at slight positive pressure compared to the outside. And what that does is that pressure differential at the perimeter, the walls and the roof and the windows and everything in that building, that pressure differential helps create and maintain a vapor barrier, okay? Well, without those two things, without the ventilation air, air in and air out in that pressurized environment, it's very, very hard to control the indoor environment in the school. The school will be prone to becoming saturated with moisture, okay, over time. And, you know, in its worst form, you know, you can end up with a sick building, which you don't have. But you could head there. So what we've basically done is we've put together an approach that, given the design of some existing units that have been installed in classroom areas, we want to go back and supplement those areas with what are called DOAS, or dedicated outside air units. Those units will be 100% responsible for ventilating those areas in the school. Actually, Jeremy, if you don't mind, let me have one and pass somehow. We did a quick little rudimentary color-coded floor plan and I'll talk you through that. So, the proposals that we've seen, one proposal we're calling a turnkey equipment proposal, and that proposal's broken down into two pieces. The first part of that proposal is to install three dedicated outside air units. One of those is a replacement, and that's for the area in red. There's actually an existing unit there that is non-operational, and so that's a replacement. The sections in green are the sections that will be directly impacted by two brand-new installations. Those installations include ductwork, you know, up in the ceiling, running ductwork to their classrooms, turnkey, electrical, roof penetrations, the whole nine yards. So those are new areas to be picked up with two new dedicated outside air units. The blue areas, which are your gymnasium, cafeteria, and library, are captured by the second part of that equipment proposal, and those are unit replacements. And what those are is, those are your larger areas that are served by larger units that have the outside air ventilation piece built into the unit, okay? And so you'll be bringing those units up to current day code in terms of energy. You'll be bringing it up to code, up to current day code in terms of ventilation, in terms of free cooling with economizer sections, et cetera. And we've also included active humidity control. So that one proposal knocks out a whole lot of the school. And the areas that are left that are not shaded, they currently have units that are providing ventilation. And so the trick will be, either as part of the energy program or when you guys do capital replacements, the trick will be to replace those units with units that have ventilation capabilities, okay? In short, what happened over time, previous administrations, they got into a program where they were replacing units that had ventilation capacity with what we call in the industry douglas or mini splits. There's a whole laundry list of reasons why that probably sounded like a good idea at the time, including the cost. Unfortunately, the fact that they needed primary air to overload, okay? And so, that one proposal, those equipment selections and all of the work associated with that, that will provide the capacity back to the school to ventilate itself, stay healthy. And then the second proposal, which we understand you need to figure out a funding mechanism for, the second proposal is to install suitable controls in the school to operate not only the new equipment, but the old equipment. One of the tricks with the outside air systems is it costs you two times the amount of energy to condition outside air as it does to condition recirculated air. So, we put these ventilation systems in, it's really, really important that we get suitable controls on them so that those units aren't running 24/7, 365, because the reality is you only need to ventilate the schools when it's occupied. So the way these systems work, if you follow me, let's say it's six o'clock in the morning, right? Let's say the bell's going to ring at seven. At six o'clock per se, units start up in what we call an early morning warm-up or early morning cooldown, and we don't start the ventilation systems yet because the school's only sparsely occupied. So the systems get about an hour to get to temperature relatively close. Bells start ringing, kids and teachers are now in and the school becomes fully occupied. Those ventilation systems start up and run, and they run to ventilate those areas all throughout the occupied day. Later on in the afternoon, the kids are leaving, the teachers, you know, an hour or two later and you're down to janitorial and sparse staff, those units cycle off overnight. And we make sure that we capture the exhaust fans, anything to do with moving air in or out of the building so that we can leave the building in what's called a neutral pressure overnight. It's one of the things that we've learned, Jamie, I don't know if you've done this yet, we call them midnight walkthroughs. So one of the things that we've learned is, it takes very, very little exhaust air in a building, like a bathroom exhaust fan that got missed and it's left running overnight. It puts the entire school system in a negative pressure overnight. And it's not bad if the outside air conditioning is mild, but if it's in the middle of winter, you're bringing in cold air through every crack and crevice in the building. If it's in the middle of summer, you're bringing in warm, hot humid air through every crack and crevice in the building. So the whole purpose of that control system is, we grab control of everything that moves air or water in that building, and we make sure it's not running when it's not supposed to and that it's running when it's supposed to be, okay? I want to just stop there, essence, the two proposals that you have, and just what kind of questions do you have? And don't, please don't be afraid.
So, do you have any cost estimates on what it cost, it costed us now to run that equipment all night and all day, 365, 24/7? What kind of statements are we expecting to see based on putting these new controls in?
Yeah, so, and it's a two-part answer. So right now, when you put the controls on the existing building, you would see great savings. The problem is, the existing building's not ventilated and there's a cost to that. I don't know, I don't have it off the top of my head. I don't know if you have. Okay. We have that information available and just, I don't have it off the top of my, tip of my tongue.
So the numbers we're seeing here in this first proposal, the 900,000, the 291, and 223, that's more or less, those three numbers would get us up to par where we need to be.
Those three numbers will get you in a very good place. The 900 and...
291.
So the 900 is the three dedicated outside air units, all the associated ductwork, electric, roof paint, everything. The 291 are the main unit replacements. The controls would tie all that together and pick up every other piece of equipment in the building. And you would be in really good shape.
What type of timeframe are you, are you looking at? You just said that we have heard this. What are you saying that the time will be?
So, that's a bit of a challenge, just being very forthright. So right now in our industry, supply chain and lead times are terrible. We're probably looking at 25 to 27 weeks on units. So the thought process was this, if you all could authorize us to move forward, we would take advantage of this coming summer break to go in and do all the ductwork and electrical and all the disruptive work in the school, get that out of the way, get the school all cleaned up and everything so that when the kids and teachers come back, everything is the way it should be. And then when the units show up, it becomes as simple as, we set up on a weekend, we bring a crane out, we set them on the roof, make the tie-ins, do the startup, you know, on a fall break or something like that. But it is, it is an issue in our industry right now. And you guys probably know this, so, you know, it was a perfect storm. So you had the effects of COVID, okay, on manufacturing. You know, you, you know, our Clarksville plant, y'all are probably familiar with it. I mean, if we were producing X number of units in an eight-hour shift and people were working next to each other, they'd have to completely retool the plant and go to extended shifts and people are separated out and all that. So you have that impact. You have the supply chain issues associated with semiconductors and raw materials, okay? And then just to make sure that we got the message, the federal government changed all the requirements for what could be sold in terms of HVAC equipment and everything effective January 1st of 2021. And it was a phased approach, but essentially it forced all of us, you know, doesn't matter if you're Trane or York or whoever, we all had to retool and start building equipment. And so it's like a perfect mess.
In total, the savings on the energy is estimated at $12,760 a year with the penalty associated with the ventilation.
What's the penalty?
The penalty is right at $7,000 a year.
So, the way to think about that is, if the building had been being ventilated, your operating cost would have been $7,000 a year more than you've been paying. So you have to reestablish your baseline with the right ventilation rate, and then you can pick up some additional savings from there.
The controls offset that, which is good because you're going to save $14,000 with controls, but you're going to spend about seven for the DOAS, and you're still positive at $7,000.
Yeah, we have to do, we have to put a DOAS on there, so we're going to see that anyway.
So from a design standpoint, you don't have to put DOAS. You could go the other way and you could just go replace all the units, the units, and use units to bring outside air through them. You'll spend more money doing that than you will just put the DOAS because the mini splits that have been installed still have good life to them. And incidentally, in today's world, we have design engineers right out of the blocks building schools using the mini splits and DOAS units, because it's not a bad combination, the way they work.
If something breaks down, it's a lot cheaper to replace a mini than it would be a full chiller.
Yeah, and the thing is, you know, when a chiller breaks down, the whole school's in trouble, yeah, so.
So the DOAS though, they do, don't typically have like longevity-wise, I mean, something that we should be fine with for years to come?
Well, and the good, the good news is, the DOAS units that are being built today versus DOAS units you would buy 15 years ago, it's a completely different class of unit.
You said they would be placed on the roof of the, of the school?
Yes, ma'am.
Sir, could I ask you a few questions?
Yes.
What kind of warranty and stuff is going to come with the equipment and the workmanship? And any kind of guarantees when it's going to clean the air?
Yeah, so, the replacement units have been put together with five-year parts and labor warranties, full lock, stock, and barrel, that's a Trane product. The DOAS units, I believe they're limited to the one-year full warranty. And, and so you have one-year full warranty on parts and labor on the unit and of course a one-year installation warranty. I would tell you that to buy additional warranty on the DOAS units, it's not cost-effective. My take would be is that the manufacturer doesn't want to be in that business. You could easily buy a service contract on them for less than what they want to charge for a one-year.
Is there any guarantee that it's going to clean the air from Trane or any of these?
So, what these units do, they don't put on quite clean air. They're going to ventilate the building, and the units have been professionally sized to put your CO2 levels and ventilation rates back into place where they're supposed to be. Let's talk about that a little bit. That's important that you guys understand that. So CO2 is what the industry uses as an indicator for ventilation or lack thereof. CO2 in and of itself is not a bad chemical or gas until you get into extreme concentrations. And even in the worst of cases, where we saw some classrooms pretty high, you're not at a toxic level, okay? The trick is when you ventilate, you start out, I'm going to give you guys some reference points. So outside air, let's just call it around 450 parts per million in CO2. That's baseline. What ASHRAE says, ASHRAE is the American Society of Heating and Air Conditioning and Air Conditioning Engineers. They're the ones that set the standards, the guidelines, and the codes. What they say is, you want to ventilate a space at a ventilation effective rate that maintains no higher than 1,000 parts per million during occupied times. So in a perfect world, you come into a classroom in the morning and you're at 450 parts per million, and all of a sudden 30 people are in the classroom, you will see that CO2 level come up sharply. Then what we want to see that CO2 level do is plateau off the rest of the day at 1,000 parts per million. And then when that classroom unoccupies, we want to see it sharply go right back down to the baseline. And that means, we were clear when we came in, we occupied, we ventilated, we cleared, we shut off. In other words, there's no point in running after you're down below that. You absolutely have a performance guarantee from Trane that this solution will do that at North Stewart Elementary.
And assume the controls will measure that during the day?
Absolutely.
Is the training for our staff built into this?
Yes.
With all the systems?
Yes.
Maintenance as well?
We do not have maintenance built into it.
What about?
We can't.
Are these filters like you were saying in everyday house? Are these electronic, electronic static filters, whatever they call them?
That's a great question. So, on the replacement units, two-inch pleated. On the DOAS, they'll be two-inch pleated. There's nothing special. No, there's not. In all cases, you're talking about two-inch pleated filters. Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary. There are, and it sounds like you already know this, there are pieces of equipment where you can get into specialty filtration stuff that all of a sudden is like, you know, and...
We, will the school be provided any kind of mechanical engineering stamp plans or?
Absolutely.
So that'd be a third party?
The development of constructs, so, let me give you a little history. So our investment-grade audit, all of the work that we're working from is 30 to 50% design and development drawings and narratives. They're suitable to achieve 50%, or suitable to achieve contract-grade pricing and contract-grade savings. Included in these proposals is the required professional engineering to produce construction documents, signed, sealed, delivered, you know, permits, the whole nine yards. We've included 100% payment and performance bonds, you know, lock, stock, and barrel turnkey. We do a lot of this work around the state of Tennessee.
It is civil engineering or structural engineering that will be required for the units on the roof.
And we're entitled to all those. Oh, absolutely.
Whenever. Whenever you get your diagram, I mean, it's red, blue, and green, or flat, how are you in the center of the school? You know, they happen to do anything.
Because those units are still operating and they're still in place to be able to ventilate. They haven't been replaced.
Just got one of the sections.
Yes. But the areas that are not colored are still working.
Are there a lot more of your units than what the other ones say?
So like, we were just talking about like the bard, or like, what, 10 years?
The bards, which would be the, I think, 21 and 23, I got it wrong. The three rooms below the center green to the right are what they call bard units that hang on the side. There are 2016. The other spaces are pretty old.
But they're, they're still functional.
But they're still functional.
And, you know, the trick with those other spaces will be, when you go to replace those units, you either go back with a unit that can handle outside air or you make a decision to follow suit and put mini splits and a fourth DOAS in that section.
So we would have to add a DOAS replacement?
If you went with me.
On that diagram, those areas, most of that's the office area, right, right in the center of the school. So there are, there's units on the roof that are correct. So you could go, you could actually go in and replace them, and those do pull the fresh air in.
Yeah, and you can replace them one at a time as needed, you know, there's no, they're all functional.
So this area right here that's not shaded anything, I guess it's already got the ductwork in it and everything. All you can do is pick one unit up and set another in the spot.
Yes, sir. Straightforward, what's called a maintenance replacement.
The trick would be, and it's easy to get caught into cost, is to make sure that you specify a unit that will meet the outside air requirements and preferably manage any kind of humidity, which we would recommend like a hot gas reheat or variable speed system typically. So just, I caution you that because a lot of schools end up being taught into a system that doesn't have those capabilities and you end up with a problem.
Right. And let me address something that you asked about. Documentation. So, you know, at some point, we're hoping to move forward with the energy program. You all will have the investment-grade audit and all of that engineering and every, you know, that's yours, you know? And in there, incidentally, is exactly the kind of stuff you were talking about. It's got the specifications that Jamie needs for future replacements, you know, it's a guidebook.
How quick can the results be expected once these units are installed?
Instant, yeah.
If one of them goes down, say the red on this map goes down, I'm assuming the rest just service the areas?
Correct.
It doesn't roll over and help service each other, does it?
Yeah, I want to be careful here. So from a design standpoint, no. From a practicality standpoint, there's some carryover, you know, through hallways and stuff. But I'm assuming that you typically operate the school with doors closed? So, yeah, so if the unit goes down, you know, we've got to get it back on.
So as far apart as not-shaded areas, up here, right? Kitchen and all that, bathrooms, locker rooms, is that a 2016 model unit too?
Yep. The, they're, no, sir, they're older systems.
They're older systems, eh?
Locker rooms aren't conditioned. They have exhaust fan on them. So they would actually become negative in theory and pull air out of the gym and kind of wash out any CO2. But there's not, folks don't hang out in locker rooms too long. So CO2 levels, typically you won't see the same impact as you with 30 kids in a classroom.
We don't use those locker rooms anymore, right?
But not a problem with the kitchen area and?
Basically storage.
Stores and all that stuff?
We don't, we don't use locker rooms with elementary kids.
It's all tied together, I assume, because it's got the kitchen area.
They're not, the drawing doesn't, that doesn't mean that they're on the same conditioning system. It just is indicating that we're not touching it. But to address your question around the kitchen, generally with the hood and the ventilation associated with the hood and the makeup air and the people, CO2 is not an issue.
Ask a few more questions if it's okay?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
On the, if they agree to these terms tonight, there's some terms and conditions in the back I just got a few questions about. So, the terms basically say upon delivery to Trane, the customer will be responsible insurance-wise. So is that, will be responsible to insure all this before, even if they vote on it tonight?
No. So, the way that it works is that Trane's installation rider will cover it until the installed systems are turned over to you. But you will definitely want to add them to your insurance method.
And then the contaminants liability, I just, I just want the board to, and I guess the public to understand that there's, you know, we're expressly waiving any contaminants liability to Trane, so. There's no, if you looked in your packet on the very last page, at number 20, you'd be waiving any kind of a...
So there's no, if you look in your packet on the very last page, at my card number twenty, you'd be waiving any kind of contaminants. It's under COVID, so it also mentions others. And there is limited warranty on anything that's not a train product, which I think we addressed, so.
A little special, uh, maybe probe it out.
Could you explain as well, just the bidding, why there's not multiple bids, if you don't mind?
Absolutely. So for your ESER-funded scope, you all have two options for procurement. These options are defined in the federal flow-down documents, CFR two hundred three nineteen and CFR two hundred three twenty. And they specifically talk about competitive bidding, procurement process, public advertisement, so on and so forth, because it's federal funds. Okay? CFR two hundred three eighteen, paragraph E speaks to streamlining the procurement process using qualified, um, intergovernmental, um, contracts, i.e. piggybacking. The trick with that is it has to be publicly bid by a lead agency and managed as such. Train is very, very fortunate. We, we currently have two of those agreements with Omni Partners. One is the ESCO eleven fifty-three agreement, which is what these proposals are based on. The other is a Racine, it's Racine County Agreement, which we did not use here. And that is for, for lighter maintenance type replacement work. The, these purchasing co-op agreements are prescriptive. So they're awarded based on low bid or lowest qualified bid. So has the Omni Partners eleven fifty-three agreement. And that agreement is prescriptive on pricing. And what it does is it spells out to the penny, what do you pay for equipment? And what we're allowed to mark up if it's a non-train product or non-train labor or something like that. So over the years, we've done a lot of this work, millions and millions and millions of dollars in the state of Tennessee. And we've gained support with the Comptroller's Office, Division of Auditing. And they, what they've told us point blank is, we'll support it so long as you work with the client to provide them what's called a, a third-party CPA certificate of compliance. But more importantly, they want the audit file in your file. And what that audit file is, is an open book estimate. And it's so that the auditor can see that all the rules of the co-op and all the right multipliers and all of that was used. Okay? So typically what we do, like if you're going to approve this, we would tell you, okay, don't, don't issue your purchase order yet. We go to our corporate strategic folks and we say, okay, on job such and such, we need to order certified, you know, letter of certificate, uh, and the audit file. And then once we bring that back to you, you can issue your purchase orders, we issue the bonds and go from there. And so the pricing has been competitively bid at the, you know, publicly through the lead agency. It's, it's a exclusive award, we just have to verify that we're operating to that agreement.
You made mention of a service contract, like, you know, after the installation is done. That's something we would, we would talk to you about outside of this. But, uh, I know we have a service contract with the high school, with the units that we have here. So I, I don't know if that'd be something that we, that we would want to do, but definitely that'd be something that we would want to talk about.
Yeah, so, and what we would do is, so, you know, train trains the industry. We've, we've learned the hard way that the worst thing you can do is put new stuff in somebody's building and don't teach them how to use it. Because if they don't understand how to use it, all of a sudden it becomes that thing on the wall or that thing on the roof and they're struggling crossbones and no one wants to take ownership of it. So we're going to train Jamie and his team to the point where they say, stop. And then we're going to say, what other level of support do you want from us and scope and price accordingly? Listen, we have some clients, like Jefferson County Schools, they'd like just to have train come do everything in the school, but it's impractical from a cost standpoint. Okay? So it's trying to find a happy medium of what you all are comfortable doing in-house, what level of support you need to augment that. We always offer free training classes, both, both, uh, here typically in Nashville, uh, and in some cases we can send you to school, you know?
Y'all have troubleshooting hotlines?
No.
If something happens to one of the units, they just cannot figure out what's going on, like, hey, have you had a troubleshooting hotline? Can you walk me through it and get me at least get me started? Y'all have any of that, now I get?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and like in you guys' case, you know, you're, you're an existing train customer. So there's, there, what I call the back door, everybody's got everybody's cell phones and so, you know, hey, you can call Randy or Jeremy or whatever, and, you know, it's Johnny on the spot and we get it taken care of. And if it's something outside of local expertise, we get tech support on the phone, boom.
You got a timeframe if, if the unit just completely goes down and we, we can't get it started as a, as a school? Y'all got a team that comes in?
Oh, yes.
X amount of time?
Yeah.
Week, ten days, two weeks?
No, no, no. So, so, uh, train, commercial, sales and services offices are located in Chattanooga, Knoxville, Kingsport, uh, Nashville and Memphis. They're fully staffed service offices. So we have trucks on the road all the time, twenty-four hours, call, you name it. The other thing too, that that control system allows, is remote diagnostics. So I know this sounds a little funny, but let's have some fun with it. So you get up in the morning, you're having your morning coffee, you're sitting in the kitchen, you pull up your school and you're looking at it on your smartphone. You know if you've got problems right then and there, before anybody's gotten on the road. Well, we also have that capability, should, you know, assuming you give us access, we can call up your building and go in and do remote diagnostics and say, oh yeah, you better check such and such.
Will there be a contract, if they pass this tonight, would it be a contract on top of this or are these the only terms and conditions to this?
That, that's it unless, uh, sometimes like you guys will issue POs that have additional terms and conditions and, you know?
All right, any more questions? All right, we'd like to thank you gentlemen for coming and answering our questions. We'll move on to item number three, a little work session, which is, uh, point three, point four, budget.
They call it Dr. Duncan a little bit too. Usually I, I start off the budget presentation by saying it, it's the same budget you've seen every year, this one's a little bit different. We have a new funding formula, the BEP program is no longer in place, it's now TESA. So the money came into the budget differently, in, in a different line item than it used to in the BEP. Uh, we, we anticipate, and, and we don't have final numbers, we're, we're basing this off of the, the three estimates that we've gotten so far. But we estimate we're going to get a bump of about three hundred thousand dollars in funding, which is, is good. We have, again, we have not seen the final numbers, th- those numbers are live numbers. They, they pull our numbers from, uh, EIS. And so when a kid, if a kid moves in or a kid moves out, it, it changes the number. So that, that number will always be live under the new TESA system. It won't be, you know, the way BEP was, they gave you a BEP allocation in July, that was your allocation for the year. If your enrollment spiked, you, you had to find the money on your own. If your enrollment dropped, you had a surplus. So TESA is, is live numbers. So the, the whole idea is that the money will follow the kid. The kid leaves here, goes to Houston County, that money goes from here to Houston County and, and the monthly payment will change each month. But we do anticipate about a three to four hundred thousand dollar, uh, increase in, in state funding this year. With, uh, the budget you have proposed to you tonight, uh, we are figuring a five percent raise for all employees. Certified, non-certified bus drivers, bus monitors, everybody's going to get a five percent raise if this budget passes. In this budget, we've also got three buses. We are proposing that the county pay for, that we split it. We split it evenly, that, uh, we pay for half and the, the county pays for half. We are not asking the county for any additional funding. Uh, I, I put a note in your, your packet that the, uh, the funding from the county looks different this year because we, we loaded more sales tax and less property tax. And because sales tax has been going up progressively the last four or five years, it, it's increased quite a bit. So we're not asking for any additional local funding, but just because of the increase in property tax, we will see about an eighty thousand dollar bump in sales tax revenue this year over last year. Another difference in this budget over previous budgets is the fact that, uh, we have two fairly sizable grants. One big grant, uh, the ISM Grant, which is the Innovative Schools Model. It's, uh, we, we've got, we've budgeted one point three six million dollars. And that money goes towards improving our CTE programs, our vocational programs. And I, I put a, a spending plan in your package as well that shows you what we're doing with that money. We're, we're buying green houses, we're, uh, upgrading ventilation systems in, in the shops, we're epoxying floors, there's just a, a laundry list. But it also, it expands the CTE program into the middle school. We'll have a CTE coordinator that will be teaching, uh, for lack of a better word, job skills classes at the middle school level, the sixth, seventh and eighth graders. So when they move from the middle school to the high school, they seamlessly roll into our, our CTE programs at the high school. And hopefully we'll, we'll be putting them out the door four years later with some sort of work credential. Something that they can, they, they can go to work or get a little more training and have a, a credential for, for work. I don't know if you want me to, to, to start going through the budget now or if you want to wait for the meeting, I, I mean, I can. Mr. Chairman, what, what's your?
We got about seventeen minutes before the, before the meeting starts.
I'll, I'll give you a quick overview.
Quick overview would be nice, it'd be nice to have a little break before we start the meeting.
The first two pages are, are the revenue pages. The revenue pages are, with the exception of the change to the property tax, sales tax, all, all the local revenues stayed static. We, we did not increase or decrease them, we, uh, we kept them the same. I did mention the fact that there are, uh, it was about one point, I didn't mention the second grant, the, the two CTE grants come to about one point four or five million dollars. The, the second one is a Spark Grant, we, we actually got that grant this year, but we haven't really started spending it. It came through in the spring, so we're going to spend that money, it's about eighty thousand dollars, and it's also a vocational grant. To go to page four, you, you get to the expenditures. And really the changes to, to the expenditure lines are to, to, for the raises. It's, it's mostly just, uh, changing the, the amounts to, to account for the five percent raise for personnel. And of course, anytime you raise the, uh, salary lines, your, all your benefit lines rise with them. Seven one one oh oh is, uh, the, that's the biggest portion of the budget, it's eight and a half million dollars of the budget. That's, uh, the vast majority of our classroom teachers. Page five, you get to the, uh, special education. The seven one two oh oh is the, that's the, we pay for eleven, eleven special ed teachers out of that, that line. That's the, the bulk of our, our special education department comes through that line. Seven one three oh oh is the vocational, that's our, our CTE teachers. And, um, that line shifted a little bit, we, we, we've got, we're adding a CTE teacher. One of the, the, uh, the teachers at the middle school will be taking on a CTE role. So she will be paid out of that, that line, so that's why it jumps a little more than some of the other lines. We have one more teacher than we normally have in that line. Uh, page six is attendance health services, or that's, there's really no change to those lines, it's other than just adjusting for the, uh, salaries. One thing I will talk about is, uh, I know SROs have done a, a question. We, I just want to remind you, we pay for two SROs, uh, out of our budget, a hundred and ten thousand dollars goes towards, uh, goes back to the county for, for SROs. So, want to mention that while I'm thinking of it. Page seven is, uh, other student support. That's, uh, if you look at line three oh nine, there, contracts to government agencies, that's the, the SRO line. Second is regular instruction. Page eight, you're looking at your, your special ed program again. This is where we pay the director, the psychological personnel, uh, out of, this is just the GP portion of the special ed budget. Uh, Ms. Robin also has IDEA, federal IDEA funds. And I'll, I'll get into anything y'all want, want me to, but, uh, everything else on that page is, is basically the same other than salaries. The allocations are the same. Same for page nine. Let's, I'll try to be, give Mr. Morgan a break. If you go over to the last page, there, there's a couple things that I want to talk about over there. Typically, if you look at, it's line five twenty-four, it's a six twenty line under other debt services. The way the, uh, the old tax levy was written, we got sales tax money that came in on the front end and then five hundred and sixty thousand dollars of that immediately went out. We, we, we never touched it and it, it went back to the, to the county government. With the change in the tax levy, if that passes, which they anticipated will, the, uh, that five hundred and sixty thousand won't come out at the end. That's, that's why you, if you add the, the amount of property tax and the amount of sales tax we got last year and then what we've got budgeted this year, it looks like it's less money, but it's not because we do not have that five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar transfer that is, like I said, written into the tax levy. That's automatic, it never, we never really saw that money, we just had to show it on our books. We still have some debt contribution going out, the county government, that's, uh, it's an EESI loan that we are going to be able to, another small loan that, uh, we, we, we've got for another couple of years. So you still see seventy-six thousand, but the net five sixty-three is not going out, so. And if you want me to, Mr. Craig, I'll talk about the, the project, the training project. And Dr. Buck, this may be where you need to, we, we've talked about this so many times and, um, we, we can fund this project between ESER funds and funds we have here in the budget. If you look at, uh, under our capital outlay, we've got, uh, building improvements, we've got two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. But that's where I'm paying for. And we may, we may change the way we break this down, but I, I was looking at paying for the controls through general purpose money and then the, uh, actual the DOAS units and the, the units, the other units in the school that we're paying for, we're going to pay for with ESER funds. But we can't commingle those funds. In other words, we can't take eight hundred thousand dollars of Esser money and a hundred thousand dollars of general purpose money for a project, for one, one part of a project. In other words, we've got to pay for the the units and the DOAS stuff solely with Esser money. We've got to pay for the controls solely with GP money. So so we can't commingle those funds. But the bottom line, with this budget as it as it's proposed, we can uh, we can complete that project completely without borrowing money. If y'all have any budget questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
Are there any questions?
Chris, you said on the the CTE, that you'll move them to the middle school. Is all of that from high school going to be offered in middle school?
No, it's more of a, it's more of a, they're getting a sampling of everything. And they're they're getting a, getting an idea of what, they'll have a better idea of what the programs are here at the high school. No, it's it's not like a, you're not going to have like a Cosmo class or a agriculture class. They're going to see a little bit of all of it.
But everything will be offered in in the middle school as a sample to to be for the high school. Is that right or no?
Can I help you?
Sure.
Well, it will be more, in the middle school, in all the CTE middle schools across the state, it's more of a career exploration type thing. What they will do, look at different programs, different careers, do uh, I forget the name of the uh, there's a program that they have that they can go through, what their aptitude is for certain types of work. Soft skills, like how to do interviews and how to talk to people when you go in the workplace, things like that. And then, yes, they will have, and we already have CTE ambassadors
Right.
uh in the high school who go to the middle school all the time with, and talk to the eighth graders. And now it's going to be all the way through sixth grade. Talk to the kids about uh the different programs that are at the high school. Does that make sense? You won't have like a HOSA.
Right. I think you would also process, but I was, I was wondering if all that is at the high school, they will know. What is at the high school in the middle school?
Absolutely, we're already doing that in an informed way, just not, we just don't have it, we're not putting any money into it right now. We do it with students, they're called CTE ambassadors. They go and speak to the kids at the middle school and talk to them about things like that. So what this is going to do, hopefully, is uh they'll have an idea of what they, what path they want to go into. And then, when they graduate from high school, certified, uh industry certification, which we already have a lot of those being done. And then hopefully, at some point, uh even having the opportunity to get some of the, if they want to go into trade, get at least a year of schooling done in high school for, say, if you wanted to be a machinist or something. And then you just have to go to TCAT for a shorter time. We're working with TCAT too, with uh bringing the programs together.
Well, they start, you think the middle school is going to start doing more? I know I was at that meeting, one of the last meetings you guys had with that, um where they're going to be learning more like about software and things like that.
Yes.
You know, we're not actually going to have machines, or like
Right.
here, we have, we have the CNC.
A lot of simulator type stuff.
Yeah, a lot of virtual.
Your virtual.
They'll see virtual stuff. Like they they made a green house. A virtual welding booth or a virtual, you know.
I know they talked about bringing green, like one of the smaller green houses.
I think, I think we kind of changed, we, I know we did, we kind of went away from that. That's just too much.
Too much.
Who would take care of it there? Sure, we are going to have it arranged for kids being, you know, at times, you know, they got to have their academic classes too. But come to the high school and experience when we do build the green house and things like that. All right, any more questions? We can always ask some more questions uh during the the regular session meeting. Uh I ask for a motion during the make a board section. Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second by Ms. Sanders, all those in favor, say yes. Yes, those opposed, no. We're adjourned. Thanks, guys.
All right, you made me seated. Thank you, tree five oh one. I was a member of tree five oh one about a hundred years ago. All right, uh item number three is the the open public comment. So before we begin, I want to welcome everybody in the public for coming out tonight. Uh this is the public comment process. Comments are limited to items that are on agenda to be voted on this evening. You'll be given five minutes. When you hear the chime, your time has expired. Please state your name and address prior to speaking for the record. All comments should be directed toward me as the chair. As a reminder, the public comments is an opportunity for us to hear your thoughts. It's not a question and answer session. If you have any additional questions, I would encourage you to reach out to the board office or one of us outside of the meeting for further discussion. I've got one name on here, that's Mr. Philip Formier. I hope I didn't butcher your name.
No, you're fine.
You got five minutes, sir?
Now that I hear the rules, I kind of doesn't have what's on the agenda tonight. It's just, I was wondering if we could just kind of move this along. I'll pass out what this is real quick. It's called the buck, me and Mike had conversations before about not letting the bikers want to come in because parents won't. Like that, just that and the other. But this is a bench. All we're asking for is six foot of room. Um the the bench has, within twenty-four hours, has been, we've been pledged, complete money. It's already, all we need is the mon, I mean, the money's there.
Okay, so.
Six foot.
So I would ask that you just reach out to Mr. Craig after the meeting sometime tomorrow, maybe, and uh and talk to him about that.
All right, I have pictures, I'll give them all to you guys.
You can, you can give those to me and I'll hand them out.
Sure. I ran out of ink.
That's all right.
So they're purple.
That's perfectly fine.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
For the time, that's what it would look like.
All right, thank you. If you reach out to Mr. Craig, um he'll talk to you tomorrow.
Tomorrow be great.
Tomorrow be great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, I have no one else on the sign in sheet. Uh item number four is corrections or additions to an approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda that it was sent out to you uh for review last week?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second by Ms. Sanders. Uh is there any uh additions or corrections to the agenda? All right, hearing none. Uh all those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed, no. All right, the yeses have it. All right, um approval of the minutes, March ninth uh two thousand twenty-three. Uh I'll stick a motion to uh to have an approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Fitu. Second by Mr. Gillum. Um is there any uh additions or directions to be made on the minutes from March ninth, two thousand twenty-three? That was in your board packet. All right, um then everyone in that's uh for approval of the minutes, signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed, no. All right, the yeses have it. All right, item number six is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to uh for passing of the consent agenda? Motion by Ms. Sanders. Second, second by Mr. Gillum. All right, um Mr. Craig, if you want to go over the additions to that?
Uh at the bottom three on the fundraisers, uh those were added late because uh those, those are for HOSA, our Health Occupations Organization. They had a number of student, or I'm not exactly sure the number that qualified for nationals. And they needed to do some more fundraising, so everybody who qualified could go. Because we were looking at having a, uh some kids who wouldn't be able to attend if they had to pay for it themselves. So they're asking to do, do uh some fun sock sales. And then uh the booth at Eagle Fest to us, I'm not sure what they're going to be selling there, but they'll be at Eagle Fest. If they want to have a car wash, they'll pay for all the travel expenses. I can't remember where they're supposed to be going.
Dallas.
Uh it's in Dallas, Texas, so there's quite a bit of uh expense to the trip. So that's why we, I added that to the uh fundraiser, approved the fundraiser. I looked at it.
All right, is there any questions about the consent agenda? All right, I'll uh, anyone in favor of passing the consent agenda as it is, signify by saying yes.
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 Yes, those opposed, no. All right, the yeses have it. All right, um item number seven is approval of budget amendments. Uh the one forty-one general, one forty-two federal, one thirty-three food service. Can I get a motion uh to, for the approval of both budget amendments?
Bring a motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second by Ms. Sanders. Um questions? I'm assuming there'll be some questions. I would like to ask, what are, what are these budget amendments?
On the one forty-one, these are line item transfers. They don't affect the bottom line of the budget in any way, share performance, just moving money from one line to the next. The first one is uh, she's moving money from, they're both uh coordinate school health related. She's moving money from in-service staff development over to to uh drugs and medical supplies by uh medical supply cabinet for one of the offices. Second one, she's moving some equipment money over to uh buy clinic supplies. But again, it doesn't affect the the bottom line any, it's just moving what line we're spending money out of. That's the one forty-one line.
All right. We got the one forty-two.
Uh the one forty-two, uh we have the Perkins amendment. Um Ms. Baggett, Baggett and Perkins can't carry any money over, so she's just cleaning up all of her Perkins money, trying to spend it this fiscal year. So she's moving uh basically supplies and materials from seventy-one one hundred four ninety-nine to seventy-one three hundred four ninety-nine. And I think she's going to end that up by buying some more certification tests. And then Ms. Robin had amendment nine oh two sub nine oh two, that's her IDEA ARP money. Um just salary cleanup and just purchase some equipment. And once again, she has to have that money spent uh for September thirtieth, so she's cleaning that up as well.
This is no new money?
No new money.
All right, and what about the one four three?
Food service, uh Ms. Wallace.
A lot of ours is salary cleanup as well, you know, as far as those uh the clerical, the cafeteria personnel, social security, that, some of that was from reimbursement from the summer feeding program. And then um others, just moving the money, it's no new money that we moved anywhere. I think, of course, food, service, equipment, we we moved some money over to uh credit some of that, to cover it, a big portion of that, because we had quite a bit in food service. The miscellaneous refunds was the reimbursements that we got from the food sor, uh from the summer feeding reimbursement. I guess that was the Esser, Esser money. And um make sure that we put all the explanations down at the bottom, if you have any questions about that.
Are there any questions about any of the budget amendments? Don't need to vote on those separately or?
We got a motion.
I got a motion for all three, I have no new money, I think we're good. All right, let's get a roll call on that, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Fitu?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
All right. Item number, item number eight is the train investment grade audit proposal. Uh I'll ask for a motion to approve the train investment grade audit proposal.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Fitu.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lamb. Discussion. We heard with uh, what, in our work session, um we've got a lot of the information out that we, I felt like we really needed to get. Uh I don't know, um you know, we we talked to Mr. Glenn about the, about how we were going to fund it. I looked at the fund balance. Uh I think the end fund balance for the year is still a pretty healthy fund balance. I think that we can, we can pay for this out of our fund balance and be be fine uh with the budget that we have in place or in the budget that we were going to have a proposal for. Is there any questions, y'all have any questions, uh any more questions we can ask? We can still ask the the gentleman from Train there here, uh if there's anything else that we want to talk about. I think uh, I think we have to do it. I think we have to, we have to make the air quality better in the school at North Stewart. I think that we've done our due diligence. I think that Train has done its due diligence in getting the best price. So that's my opinion. And I'll ask for a roll call if there's no other questions. All right, Ms. Daisy, roll call.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yeah.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Fitu?
Yes.
All right. The Train proposal is approved. Item number nine is the discussion approval of the five one two fiscal adjustment. Yeah. All right, let's uh, let's get a motion to uh, get a motion for approval of the of the five one two fiscal adjustment. Motion by Ms. Sanders. Second by Mr. Gillum. All right. Now, discussion.
Essentially, last year was the, on the audit report and previous years, that the comptroller's office had always, always broken out COVID nineteen and Esser expenditures into separate items. So for example, anything spent in the seventy-one thousand category, they would put uh seven one nine oh one and seven one nine oh five. They didn't, are not going to do that in FY twenty-three this year. So our, my original budget last year had those expenditures already broken out when we passed that original budget. So what the auditor said, and it, many federal program directors in West Tennessee had done this too. So her suggestion was, we didn't need to do a budget amendment, we just need to make the board aware that this year, the COVID and Esser expenditures are going to be broken out in the audit report like they were in the previous years. So anything that was uh, where in the past where they were broken out seven one nine oh one, seven one nine oh five, those are going to be back into seventy-one one hundred this year. Same thing on capital outlay, pre, last year in the original budget, I had seventy-six nine oh five to separate the ARP expenditures for capital outlay, which was seventy-six one hundred, which is the normal capital outlay expenditure number. I guess she didn't say it needed a vote or amendment or anything, she just said, I need to make the board aware. So I wanted it on the agenda to show that, you know, we did, we, the board was made aware. So have any questions you can ask?
So we didn't need a, we do not need to vote on on this. Okay, we can accept that with the motion. And that motion, y'all have to uh, uh, y'all have to excuse me. I'm, I'm trying to do Robert's rules, but I just want to make sure. Don't need roll call, okay. Um is there any questions about what Dr. Duncan has relayed to us? All right, um do, do we want to accept that? I think we can accept that. I'll say, everyone in, all in favor, say yes. Yes, those opposed, all right. All right. Sorry. All right, uh item number ten is approval of the FY twenty-four budget. Um I'll, this is all, this is all encompassed in the one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, and the one forty-four, which is the general federal food service and transportation. Um you, we'll think about how to break that out individually. Yeah, let's break those out individually. So what I'm going to ask for is a motion for the approval of the one forty-one general uh budget.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Uh second by Ms. Sanders. Now, discussion. Is there any questions for Mr. Glenn? Uh you know, he started earlier discussing uh our, our budget. He ended, we went through it uh for some time. Uh, you know, he started earlier, uh, discussing, uh, our, our budget, uh, he ended, we went through it, uh, for some time.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Is there any questions for Mr. Gwynne on this?
Did he get down with everything he was going to in our seventeen minutes?
The only thing I would say.
I'm still sat on over there, you were going through this, please.
Thank you, Mr. Gillum. Is, uh, if you go to the last page, where, where we get to the bottom line, and you, you alluded to the fact of the fund balance, you know, our fund balance is going to end this year right at four million dollars. We'll, we'll probably beat that estimate a little bit. This year's budget does, does have a deficit, but again, I, I feel like there's a possibility we'll get more TISA funds, I feel like there, that, uh, you know, Heather has taken a very conservative look at, uh, at, at sales tax numbers, you know, I feel like we, we will probably beat that estimate as well, but that would still leave our, but, our fund balance, worst case scenario, three and a half million dollars. So, yeah, and we're, we're, we're in good, good shape. If something unexpected comes along, we, we would have the money to take care of it.
And that's with us paying for one and a half buses?
Right, right.
It did say every employee a five percent, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Everyone.
Everyone.
Is there any other questions about the budget? All right, I'll ask for a roll call.
Ms. Fitch you?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders? Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes. All right, the one forty-one general, passed, can I get a motion for approval of the FY twenty-four budget for the one forty-two federal? Motion by Ms. Sanders, second by Mr. Gillum. Questions? Dr. Duncan, you want to talk about that just for a moment?
Yeah, sure. Um, I might have noted on this budget, uh, preliminary allocations, you know, the federal fiscal year doesn't begin until October first, normally we have a preliminary allocations for the next fiscal year. This year, they were supposed to be in April third, they got delayed, um, they were supposed to be in this week, they still have not been posted. So, uh, for all the ESA funds, that's Title One, Title Two, Title Four, IDAB and preschool IDA, all those revenues up there are just what we had received this year as revenue, something to go on, which, we never received the final federal allocations until after October first anyway. Um, so as far as those are concerned, the budget, exactly the same, you know, Title One, we're still funding the two ELA coaches at the two elementary schools, math coach at the elementary schools, four RTI assistants, uh, math interventionists, our extended school day tutoring, and then our required set of sites for homeless students and family engagement. Uh, Title Four still includes the stop-ins for robotics coaches and then supplies for all of our STEM projects for our well-rounded students, so Title Four is to be broken up into well-rounded, safe and healthy schools and then technology. And then, um, they'll pay stop-ins for our PBS coordinators will come out of Title Four. ESER Two, um, that's winding down, we have to have that, all that money spent and expended by September thirtieth of this coming year. If you notice, we got close, there's ten thousand dollars rolling over into the next fiscal year, and hopefully that will be used to, uh, fund the fencing project, which is like the project that's wrapped up at Dover Elementary right now on the playgrounds. We're going to do the same thing at North Stewart, and that, um, that will wipe, wipe out ESER Two funds. ESER Three, um, that funds the sixteen learning loss interventionists for K-eight, one social worker, uh, still purchasing textbooks that the board adopted in March, at March meeting. Some of those are going to be purchased after July of one, uh, still got some funding in there for replace our Chromebooks around twenty-five percent of those next fiscal year. And then, uh, if you look, the big one for ESER Three, the one point four-two-eight million dollars for, uh, capital projects, and that would be for the, uh, North Stewart project. Any other questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Any other question? Thank you, Dr. Duncan. I'll ask for a roll call.
Ms. Fitch you?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yeah.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes. All right, um, item number, let's see, this, we're still on the same line, uh, food service, one-four-three. Uh, I'll ask for a motion for approval of the FY twenty-four budget for one-four-three food service.
I like a motion.
Motion by Ms. Fitch you. Second by Ms. Sanders. Discussion. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
My budget is staying pretty close to what we estimated for this past year, and, but I did want to make some notes on a couple of things, and that's, uh, line forty under the food service equipment grant. We have received eight thousand dollars to, uh, uh, replace the freezer and the cooler at Dover Elementary. And, um, this is the same kind of, this was the same grant that we received a few years ago to replace the serving line over at North Stewart. So, I was thinking about that, because not everybody got that grant. Um, let's see. Uh, some of you may look at line thirty-six and ask maybe why we didn't receive anything in twenty-one, twenty-two, that was because we had universal feeding for everybody, everybody got no-cost meals during that period of time. Uh, we are planning to still continue the two elementary schools at no cost for, um, possibly, well, for sure the next three years, and we could possibly roll it to four years. So, um, over to the expenditures. I have, uh, under the cafeteria personnel, we are having some, um, challenges, you know, keeping people, um, in the department, and I, I attribute a lot, in the past month, I've had three leave because they got better offers. So, I have, um, I have worked in extra money to pay them a little bit, well, more than the five percent, you know, so, I don't know, that's something that we'll have to discuss at another time, but, um, I, that's why you see such a big inflation there. I really wanted to make it a little more competitive to.
How many employees do you have?
It, it ranges from thirty to thirty-four, thirty-five.
That's a good number, to have thirty to thirty-four.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Does, does cafeteria personnel, does that include your managers as well?
It does, yes. Um, I went to a meeting today, uh, with other supervisors, and, um, a lot of them are, you know, not, what they're doing is they're paying more as people quit, you know, by attrition, so, uh, they're, they're giving them more money, but they're not hiring, you know, to replace some of those. So, uh, we're trying to keep that, you know, we're trying to keep it there, so that we can, we don't want to over, overwork the staff and make them quit. Uh, the other thing, under the food service equipment, uh, eighty-nine, uh, line eighty-nine, uh, that looks like a lot, but you got to remember that eighty thousand is going to be absorbed into that, uh, from the freezer and the cooler. And there are some pieces of equipment, several pieces of equipment that need to be, uh, replaced. Um, our wonderful maintenance, and I, I mean that from the bottom of my heart, we've got a wonderful maintenance department, uh, are, have asked that I try to work in, um, like a refrigeration truck, so that if a freezer or a cooler goes down, we're trying to replace them, you know, slowly but surely, that they've asked that, uh, we work in some money to try to purchase like a refrigeration. Refrigeration, cooler, or, so that we can just back it in and put the food in there. So, that's, that's why you see, you know, some, yeah, it is, and especially when you lose, when you lose food. And if you look down at, um, our beginning fund balance for this year, where we're going to, and our ending fund balance, we, we spent down, we were supposed to spend down more according to the state. But, this next year, we're going to work a little harder to, you know, to replace equipment, so it will spend down, but we'll still have, uh, over a three-month operating balance, and that's what the four fifty-nine to fifty-three, and actually, we'll probably hand more, uh, than that, you know, just to give it, I like to have a little bit of cushion, so that we get caught in another COVID situation, we can cover it. Any questions?
I believe you guys answered most of them, what I'm understanding, any equipment that breaks down, you're replacing everything then, because it gets the age on it?
Well, some of it, some of it we're, we're repairing, and that's what the, the maintenance department is really, really good about that. We get some of it repaired, but Dover Elementary, their freezer and cooler situation is awful, it's, it's, it was, it's getting dangerous because it's buckling, and when they roll carts in, we're concerned about that. So, uh, we are trying to replace equipment, my goal is to get all the freezers replaced eventually, so we'll have one down. And, um, we just spent nine thousand dollars, close to ten thousand dollars replacing one of the freezers here at the high school upstairs.
Any more, any more questions? All right, I'll ask, uh, everyone in, I'll ask for a roll call.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Fitch you?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yeah.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
All right, moving on to, uh, uh, one forty-four transportation budget. Um, I'll ask for a motion for, uh, approval of FY twenty-two, I'm sorry, FY twenty-four budget for one forty-four transportation. Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second by Mr. Gillum. Discussion.
This, this, this one is the, it, it's a formality, we've, we've still got a balance in the, the transportation bus fund of six thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars. Just to remind you, this is where they used to put, uh, pennies of property tax in, uh, we haven't done that in the last several years, but the, there's still a balance there, so we have to pass a budget. There's no money coming in, no money going out, we are going to revisit that with county, uh, to look at it, at a funding source for buses, but, uh, a, as of right now, nothing has changed, so it's just a formality that we have to pass this budget.
Any questions? All right, can I get a roll call?
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Fitch you?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Item number eleven is discussion approval of policy three point five zero zero. Um, I'll ask for a motion for, uh, the approval of the policy three point five zero zero change. Motion by Ms. Sanders?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lamb. All right, discussion, Mr. Craig.
And this, uh, Wallace may have to help me with this a little bit.
No problem.
This is, uh, uh, we, we just had our review, state review, and, um, our board policy was on, uh, what, what was it, Ms. Wallace?
Uh, our, our policy states that there can be, uh, twenty fundraisers a year, however, it's supposed to stay thirty, I think it was like ten each semester, so it was twenty, but they said that thirty is the one that has to be, because it's safe, it is the, under the TCA, they wanted it changed, which I, I thought we could be more strict, but they want it, they want it to stay thirty.
So, we get to have more food fundraisers?
Yes, yes. Basically.
So, basically what we're doing is getting our, our board policy in line with.
TCA.
TCA code.
That, and we have to make sure that the TC, the TCA number on there is incorrected, so we have to make sure.
Yes, we'll, we'll get all that fixed when we send it to TSVA, and they will update our policy.
That was the only finding we had, by the way.
Yes.
That was it. Y'all see a North Stewart person, thank them, because they did a wonderful job on the overview.
Is there any questions? All right, uh, all those in favor, uh, for approval of the policy, uh, three point five zero zero change? Say yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed?
No.
All right, the yeses have it. All right, uh, item number twelve is discussion approval of the social media lawsuit settlement. Uh, I'll request a motion for approval of the social media lawsuit settlement. Motion by Mr. Gillum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lamb. Uh, all right, uh, discussion. Charles, you have that?
Well, it's not a, not a settlement, it's just a contract to, to go into that lawsuit, that's the one that you spoke about, uh, Meta, Facebook, TikTok, YouTube, Google, they're kind of going after those, uh, which, most of those are owned by the same company, but they're going after them for social media, anything to protect social bullying, anything, so, they expect it to be pretty large, I think it, they, last I spoke with them, they're trying to get filed by May, so, and it may already be filed, I'm not even sure, it's the same people that are doing the jewel and the banking lawsuits, so. It's just a contract that whatever we get, they can get twenty-five percent of, same attorney contract, so. There'll be more to come from the settlement, if there is a settlement, it may go to trial, but if there is a settlement, there'll be more to come, and what you're being, it's true.
And this is no cost to us?
No.
It's just, we're tagging along?
Tagging along in class action lawsuits with other schools and counties and across the nation.
All right, is there any other question? Need to change the way that we said that?
You may want to amend it to say approval of the social media agreement settlement.
Mr. Gillum, would you be willing to amend your, your previous? So, can you make a motion to amend your previous? To say that it's, we're entering into a contract with, uh, in the social media lawsuit?
We're entering into a contract, okay?
Okay, now we're into a contract. All right, uh, Danny's second for the amendment.
Second.
Second from the amendment by Mr. Lamb, and now I'm going to ask for a roll call?
Oh, did you say that again, please?
Okay, so, it's not a settlement.
It's not a settlement.
It's just, we're entering into a contract with, uh, with, with the.
Oh, you said agreement.
Attorneys.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, let's ask for a roll call on that, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Fitch you?
Yes.
All right, item number thirteen is, uh, discussion approval of FY twenty twenty-four professional development. Um, I'll ask for a, I request a motion for the approval of the FY twenty-four professional development. Motion by Mr. Gillum. Second by Ms. Sanders. All right, discussion, Mr. Craig.
We're, we're required every year to have the, uh, school board approve professional development for our teachers, uh, you have in front of you the, uh, what will be covered on the days in August, when we come back, uh, I don't have mine in front of me. Yeah, uh, I'll, we'll answer any questions you'd like, uh, if you have any questions about the professional development. But, uh, one, some of the stuff, one thing I want to point out, on, uh, one of the things we're going to emphasize on is, uh, is, uh, mental health and, and bullying and things like that. Uh, we will be doing on Thursday, August third, darkness to light child abuse training, uh, that will be for all teachers, all employee, all, uh, all of our teachers. That's, that, I just wanted to point that out, a lot of the in-services with, uh, the new curriculum involved that we, uh, that you approved in math, our math teachers will be, uh, getting into that curriculum and textbooks that we purchased, uh, so they can do that, and then just normal training that we have every year, and all the bloodborne pathogens and all that type of stuff that we have to require by law to do. There's nothing out of the ordinary on, on any of this, we're just pretty much saying we do it every year.
Yeah, I like seeing that, uh, darkness to light training for everyone. Capturing kids' hearts for freshers too, I like that one too, that one, that one's a good one as well. Any other questions? All right, uh, I'll, I don't think we need a roll call for that. Uh, all those in favor for? All those in favor for approval of the 2024 professional development, say yes?
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, no? All right, the yeses have it. All right, item number 14 is discussion approval of surplus property. Added to the agenda from what was sent out in the packet, but can I get a motion for approval of being able to sell the surplus property? Motion by Ms. Pichu. Second by Ms. Sanders. All right, Mr. Craig?
Got a 1993 GMC service truck. Is this the green one? Huh? Is this the green one? I believe it is, it's finally, no, it's in the half a million yards. That truck is, it's old, and it's, we're gonna put it on GoDills and see what we can get out of it. I think it runs in for it.
I thought that one was gone.
We can't, well, it's parked behind the
Okay.
It's parked up by the football field.
I guess it's
Kinda hard to miss that truck.
But we got, it's finally gone and we're going to see what we can get out of it. Been a good truck.
Any other questions? I'll ask for a roll call on that.
Ms. Pichu?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Yes. Item number 15 is new business, I don't think, well, we had one little piece of new business here, and yeah, I would say that's, I wouldn't say it's really business, but but I'll go ahead and talk about it. Summer Law Institute in Jackson is June 30th, 2023. And then the Summer Law at Gatlinburg is July 21st and 22nd.
21st, 22nd.
Yeah, 21st, 22nd. So, June 30th for Jackson and July 21st, 22nd for Gatlinburg.
If you want to sign up, get in touch with Stacy, which one you want to go to, and she'll take care of all the arrangements.
I don't know if I put that in the right spot, but it is. All right, item number 16 is director's report.
All right, I've got a few things, mostly, well, I hope all good news. We, I, we had placed on our, on our website, the, the last board meeting, we approved having a, an additional air quality study done on all of our schools. If people would like to look at it in detail, it is on our website, there's a link to it. And so, you know, I think the things that we found in this, in this new one, I'm just gonna summarize a little bit. It was pretty much the same information that we got from the train air quality study to begin of the year. And as we voted on the night, the board did, we're gonna be addressing the issues that were there. So, if you want to look at that, it is on the website, on the front page, there's a link to it, you can, can read it, a lot of it, I I mean, I understand a little bit, but I'm not, but it's, it's pretty straightforward. Like to talk about some of the projects that we have completed this, this spring so far. And most of these have been paid for through ESTER II and ESTER III money. We completed the fencing at the playground at Dover Elementary. That was a safety concern, and now it's completely fenced off where kids can't get into the woods or anything like that. All carpet at North Stewart has been removed and replaced with tile. I think that's gonna help with, with some of the issues we may be having too. Those carpets out there were ancient, and, and actually, we've been replacing those for years, it's finally done. Ever since I've been back in Stewart County, I remember Ms. Grasky every year with requests that we tear out carpet out of one of the classrooms and put tile down, and we finally got that project done. We had to remove the old carpet in the band room here at the high school, it's been replaced, all this work was done over spring break. And we, I think the only, only last floor project we have right now is at North Stewart, and that's just in the offices. And this page is in this pal's offices, and that, we'll do that this summer. We, we will this summer, and it's been, already been ordered. All the mulch in our playgrounds at the two elementary schools are being replaced by rubber mulch. So, that project will be going on this summer. That, we'll probably start on that in May, right, Jane? Yeah, when they start delivering it, we're gonna start taking out the old wood mulch to have new rubberized mulch, which I think will help with safety and health. You know, the, that mulch, that wood mulch is terrible, it's, it's not very good to have on playgrounds, I don't think. April is the month of the military child. I don't know if y'all seen some of the stuff on social media that we have been promoting. On, on April 19th, coming up pretty soon, we'll be, we're gonna have purple update in Stewart County schools. I gave, I put on everybody's desk a, a purple ribbon, and we're encouraging everybody, if you don't have anything purple, which I don't, so I'm gonna wear a ribbon, so we've got, everybody's gonna be doing that, you're gonna see a lot of talk and pictures about supporting the children that, that we have in our system that are, are associated with the military. And we're just real happy to, to be involved in that. Thursday, April 20th, at, starting at 6 o'clock, we're gonna have a, a self-care fair here at the high school. We're gonna have a speaker, Mr. Alex Berta's gonna come and give a condensed version of his presentation on the dangers of, of social media, not necessarily social media, but cyber, you know, internet stuff where kids get on and, and talk to parents and whoever wants to come about the dangers of that. Ms. Jackson, how many vendors do we have set up?
We have invited 30 and we have 20 in charge.
20, 20 vendors that will have all kinds of information on resources for just self-help, mental health. It's for students, adults, staff. I know that we're, all of our, we're trying to encourage our staff to come and, and we're all gonna be there, and I think it's a good opportunity to, for everybody to come together and, and, and take care of some of the big issues that we all are facing in society, not just in the schools.
Time, the amount, the time.
Doors open at 5:30, speaker at 6, and then the vendors will be there till 7. So, we're gonna have, you know, just a lot of different, I don't even have the list in front of me, but a lot of different people there, a lot of different agencies to share resources with everybody. And the last thing I want to talk about is, is bittersweet for me, I'm not even bittersweet, I'm mad about it actually. I found out this week that Ms. Elaine Jackson, our coordinated schools health director, is leaving us. And she's got 30 years in, in between the court system and the school, seven years with the school system?
26.
22 years with the school system. She's taken a new position, she's gonna retire, by the way, but she's gonna go back to work, and she'll be working as the executive director at Land Between the Lakes Association. And we wish her well, she's gonna be missed. I tell you personally, I'm gonna miss her because she helps me do a lot of stuff. And she has really made our coordinated school health program probably the top in the state. It's been recognized all over the state, and we're kind of a model for, for the way things should be done in that, in that area.
So, if we vote no, she can't leave?
I kinda told her that
I'll make a motion, no.
I congratulated her, then I said, I hate you, because she's, it sounds like a pretty good gig lately. And, and I just wanted to mention that tonight, and so, Elaine, good luck. She's not leaving us yet, we're, I'm gonna still be leaning on her until we transition to how, how that's gonna look after she leaves. So, thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ms. Elaine. Announcements? All right, item number 17 is announcements. Board member have anything they want to talk about? I'd like to say, going back to our fundraisers with Hosa doing so well at their state competition. I know that FDLA did, they did very well at their state competition, I had some of my kids read that. There was another group that was, at the same time, somebody helped me out with that from a crowd on a fair.
FCC LA.
FCC LA, yes. They, they also represented Stewart County well, we had a lot of kids that placed really highly in, in the state competition that'll be going to, to nationals in our, in our, from our school system, they're representing, so. Real pleased with, with that, I got to see all that on the, on the Facebook and just, we got a lot of great kids. And that was something to highlight and appreciate all of them, I appreciate all the, all the teachers, all the, all the ones that are the sponsors for those, for those, for those, those groups. Because without them, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have those kids doing those things, so, really appreciate those. That's all I have. Anybody got anything else? All right. Ms. Sanders, motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Pichu, all those in favor say yes, yes, those opposed no? Yeses have it, we're adjourned.